Good?
Good.
All right. I am calling to order the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for July 17th, 2024. Participants are welcome to attend live here in the McCall hearing room. They are also welcome to attend virtually through the www.masouthborough.civicplus.com virtual meeting site. Okay, so the first item we have on the agenda this evening is 337 Turnpike Road. Laura, do you have the...
Yep. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing at the McCall Hearing Room, 17 Common Street, Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, at 7:00 PM with regard to the petition of Gracious Home Adult Day Healthcare Center LLC, 337 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass., map 25, lot 12B. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to allow two principal uses on one lot and to allow an adult daycare use. The property is located in the Industrial Park Zoning District. Relief is requested under Section 174-8(c)(2), Section 174-8.6(c)(7), and Section 174-9.
All right, so for the applicant, if you have anybody who has something to present, you could come to the table and just let me know who you are and what your role is. Sorry about that, that was off.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Neil Bingham. I am the attorney for the applicant.
Hey, hello, everyone, and thank you so much for coming. My name is Tony Zhang. I'm the manager and owner of Gracious Home Adult Day Healthcare Center. Thank you.
And then also helping us with our presentation tonight is Matthew Murva from Bowler. He'll have a few words, third in line.
Okay. Do you have anything to present, or are you just going to speak?
Well, I think that we're just going to speak.
Okay. We did, I think we've all seen the details, so probably not necessary, but why don't we, why don't you go ahead and start?
Yeah, the only thing that we're going to present probably is the site plan. We'll put it up and point some things out. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So, we're here today seeking two special permits, one under 174-8.6(c)(7) to authorize the adult daycare use in the IP district, and the second to allow a second principal use on that site. So, when I think about coming before a board on a special permit, I used to, I used to think that I could impose my will. I've since learned that these are discretionary, these are discretionary permits, and that they are going to be allowed if we do our job, and that is to, one, establish that we have a right under your bylaw to be here in the first place under these two sections. And then, two, in my own words, and not necessarily the words of the criteria, it is to establish for you that we have a really good project, a project that will provide benefits to the Town of Southborough, and that when you balance those benefits against any negatives, and naturally, we would tell you there are, there really aren't any negatives here, that you are now looking at a project that you'd like to see here, and that we get our grant in that, in that manner. I think the best way to deal with this is, I'm just going to say a couple of things about how we're here. I would then like to turn it over to the applicant, Tony Zhang. And, you know, Tony is just going to explain to you a little something about his experience, which I think really matters here. This isn't the first time that he has, he has started an adult daycare facility, has another one in Burlington, and it's, and it's very, very successful. It's kind of nice to know that if someone's coming in, that they might actually be able to be successful in the, in the, in the project that they're doing. And he'll talk about those things, and, you know, how the adult daycare really does provide, I think, exactly what it is that the, what the bylaw is looking for, which is, you know, let's promote the health, the safety, and related things, you know, for the community, and minimize the detriment. So, you know, with that said, I am going to turn it over to Tony. He's briefly going to describe these things. When Tony's done, I think it makes some sense for myself and for Mr. Murva to fill in any blanks, and at any time to stop talking and to take your questions if you, if you have them along the way. Tony?
Hi, hello, everyone. You know, I have a existing facility in Burlington, and that one has been in business for like three years. Actually, this month, July, is going to be the 30-year anniversary. In the past three years, you know, we provide a service to about 200 members from like, you know, about 100 families, because sometimes, like, you know, the couple, the husband and wife, they both join us. Let me talk about the service, like, you know, we provide in the past three years. So, like, the program operating hours is from like 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We provide door-to-door transportation, so we have our own, like, you know, shuttle buses to the, you know, their houses, the front door, to pick them up and bring them back to the center. In the afternoon, you know, same thing, you know, we have the shuttle bus, send them back to the front door. So, we don't just do like, you know, curb drop off, we make sure they get to the front door safely. And also, we provide like two hot meals, breakfast and lunch. And we contract with a fully licensed restaurant, so they do catering, you know, they, every day, we get a fresh meals, morning and lunch. Besides that, you know, inside the facility, we have like nurses, registered nurses on site every day. We have like, right now, in the other facility, we have like six registered nurses working for us. For each day, two will, 12 of them will be on site. What they do, they will like, you know, supervise the seniors, and also, they work closely with the PCP, make sure they can monitor all the changes about the senior. If there is anything, you know, we notice, you know, they, you know, something wrong, we need, we will inform the PCP, you know, the same day, and we will discuss a solution. Whatever we will do, we will follow the PCP's order, and we will perform the treatment. And besides that, the meals, you know, we provide, we have a contracted, like, you know, nutrition. The nutrition will review the meals order, the menu, every six months or three months, depending on the season, make sure the nutrition, everything is, you know, good enough for the seniors. And also, you know, we have like, you know, on-site, you know, aides, certified aides on-site, they provide, you know, hands-on services. For example, like, you know, Ms. A wants to take a bath, so we can do that, and Mr. B wants to go to restroom, needs assistance, so our, like, you know, certified aide will provide that service. By doing this, you know, we can reduce, you know, the caregiver's stress and burnout. Sometimes, you know, like, you know, you know, like, one family have, like, you know, syndrome at home, but they, they need to work, but because, because of the senior, they need, you know, assistance, sometimes, they cannot go to work for that day. So, that will, like, you know, actually, for the family, that will be like a very stressful job, but we take that over without paying. You know what? Because, you know, all the funding is through the government, through insurance company. So, for the senior, they don't even need to pay a penny for that. We've contacted with, like, you know, a different insurance company, like a Top Health Plan, you know, Senior Health, like, you know, Navy Care, that kind of insurance company, so we can, we kind of like, you know, the real caregiver, we give the service, real service, the benefit to the senior. And also, for everyday operation, you know, the buses, we own the buses, we don't have third party. We own the buses, and we have the drivers. So, they will be like, you know, well-trained, we will make sure, no matter the pickup or drop-off, we'll be very safe. And also, for the 337, the location from the map, you can see, you know, it's right on Route 9, you know, that one give us like, you know, very easy access to the main road. So, we can, from there, we can go to, you know, the local town or the surrounding towns without any problem. And also, you know, there, around the building, there's a loop line, so we would design like a loop, we will like, you know, come from a one direction and go into the other direction, make it like a one-way. We don't have like a two-way traction. That means, you know, whenever we pick up or drop off, the side door will be on the curbside. So, the senior got off, they'll be very safe. And we have like, you know, employee at the front door to greeting them, make sure they got off, you know, the bus safe, and getting the center safely. If you have any questions, you can, you know, ask me anytime, you know, I'm happy to, you know, answer whatever concern or question we may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony. So, Matt, I think it would make some sense, I'm going to trade places to you. Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Again, my name's Matt Murva with Bowler. We're the engineers who've been helping with the application here, and really, not a lot for us to do, to be quite honest with you. We're not, we're not changing the site. It's an existing structure on Route 9. The building sits between two parking areas, both accessible for this building, and the build-out will include around 14,000 square feet of space that will be dedicated to the gracious home use within the overall two-story footprint and structure that already exists there. So, there's really no exterior construction happening as part of this project. All we're really talking about is swapping out the signage on the exterior. Everything else will be within the four walls of the building that you see here. There are accessible parking spaces on site already, clearly striped, so we have that requirement met. We'll be dedicating some spaces here to the vans that Mr. Zhang mentioned, and those still allow us for plenty of parking for the uses that remain in the building besides the adult daycare. We need, by the calculation, that is a little tough to see on this screen, but we need, by zoning, 106 spaces, and we provide over 140 within the property. So, we're amply parked here on site to accommodate this use. We're not changing the access, that will remain right here off Route 9, so no additional curb cuts or additional modifications to the site. So, just wanted to, you know, just sort of walk through that, that it's sort of a minimal impact. It really is the change in use that we're, we're here to discuss tonight, but if there are any questions on parking, site, anything, glad to let answer them.
So, okay, before we start with the questions from the board members, you did, there will be a site plan review of the site before the planning. So, as far as some of the details that relate to the spot, like, as we just mentioned, parking spots, et cetera, they will be covered, but why don't we, why don't we start with Paul? Do you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions. I don't, like, I agree, I don't see the, any adverse impact here. I don't see any, it doesn't appear to be any increase in traffic or safety issues, so I think that, you know, there's no changes to the building or the lot or anything like that, so it doesn't, the use doesn't seem to be too detrimental or anything, so I don't, I don't really, I don't really have any questions or see any, any problem with it. You know, the typical thing, sometimes I ask if there's any, like, objections from neighbors or something like that, but I don't, I don't even see what would be objectionable here, but I don't know if we, you know, that's...
I mean, it is an existing building in use, so it's not like you've added something new.
Right.
Agreed. Okay.
That's all.
All right. Doug?
So, I'd agree with Paul. I mean, first of all, I think it's a great use. We have some friends that actually have their, you know, parents or parent living with them, and so, I think it's just another great option for, you know, folks in Southborough area to have another option where their parents can be with them, and they can be somewhere during the day. A lot of parents, you know, you know, dealt, yeah, dealt children, yeah.
No, 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 no.
You know, as we call it, the adult children have, you know, places where they need to put their parents during the day, and they're both working, so I think it's great. I think it's also great that, you know, we obviously know the commercial office market is a bit down, and the ability to have different uses in these buildings and reuse it, I think is great too as well. So, I don't think it's detrimental of anything, I think it's value-add to the town, and I think it's good. Do have a couple of quick questions. I've heard the word bus, and I heard the word van, so there's more out of curiosity, are these vans, are these buses, or more just, is there any more details, or are there various sizes? I'm just more curious.
Okay, actually, you know, I said, you know, the shuttle buses, they are like, you know, vans.
Yep.
Yep, so like, you know, like, most of them...
Like a Sprinter van.
Yeah, yeah, so ADA accessible, as needed, yep.
That's right.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, when you're fully up and running, how many seniors do you think would be in your facility, more just out of curiosity?
Sure. You know, from other existing facility, for the daily capacity, we service around like 100 senior every day? I think they'll be around that.
Great.
You know, and also, transportation and traffic is not going to be a problem, because, you know, 99% of our, like, you know, member seniors, they don't drive. We provide, you know, the, you know, transportation. You know, we encourage them to sit on our shuttle bus, because that will be like super safe. We don't want them to drive to the center. Even, they have like, you know, family member, they want to come here, you know, they cannot just come here and knock the door and walk in, you know, we need appointment. They say, you know, this coming Friday, I want to go there, see my father, like, you know, Mr. Space, that's okay, no problem, we didn't know that, and when they come, you know, we have like employees right at the front to welcome them and get them the way. We don't let them to walk around, because, you know, this is like a medical facility, we cannot let strangers work around the, you know, the facility. And also, if we have like, you know, visitors, same thing, they have to make appointment, same, we'll tell them, you know, you don't need to drive, you know, we will provide like, you know, bus to your door, because, you know, we want them to experience the fully, like, you know, service, like, for the regular day. Yeah. And also, for overnight parking, that's for sure, you know, the buses will be parked there. I think for this, you know, location, we will have about like 10 buses, you know, parking overnight, and besides that, only like employees. I don't think there will be any other persons, you know, parked there.
Okay, great, thank you. No other questions.
Okay. Doris?
I'll just try to add unique comments. So, I'm in agreement with the other board members that it seems like a unique value-added service that we could add to the town, and it fills the gap where the elderly, we're not sure what your age limit is, can maybe stay in their home, or stay with their, their children, or, and also be cared for during the day. Just have a few questions, and I know you're going to have the answer to it. So, you talked, use the word medical facility, use the word RN, and to give you some reference, I'm pretty close to the problem. I have an elderly parent, and, and they've been housed, they need to be in long-term housing. This is not an overnight housing, I understand that. So, are you actually registered? I know that assisted living is treated one way in the state, and nursing homes fall under some guidance by the state as well as, well as the assisted living. Is there a registration, or can you say medical facility? You're saying you provide PCP services, does that, could you kind of explain that aspect to me? I do understand it from an assisted living and a nursing home perspective. And then you also went on to say, you know, medical insurance coverages, and, I mean, you don't have to really address that exactly, but does this fall under the protection and guidance with Massachusetts general laws?
Yes, that's right. Actually, the program is called Adult Day Health Program, so ADH, and that is registered with, you know, the state Department of Public Health. So, the other facility, the existing one, same thing, you know, all registered with the Department of Public Health of Massachusetts. And also, you know, I want to tell you something about, you know, why we encourage, like, you know, senior attending this kind of facility, not only us, I know, you know, in Southborough, I don't think there's any existing facility like us, but in the surrounding neighborhood, surrounding towns, there are a few. You know, by attending these, you know, they can, you know, reduce the risk of falls and hospitalization, sometimes, like, you know, when they are home alone, because, you know, that's not possible, like, you know, the caregiver, like, you know, son or daughter or other caregivers, will be there like 24 hours, or especially during the day, they need to work, like I said before. So, if they come to us, the risk will be reduced greatly.
Yes, so my question, I agree, by the way, the fall is often of great concern to, you know, children of elderly parents, but you're accountable, so my question's more of an oversight perspective, so the facility is formally registered with this...
The state.
So, under those rules and regulations for the safety, not that it sounds like you're going to provide all the safety and all the guidance necessary to care for these elderly, but that they're safe.
Yeah.
You're reportable. Is that, is that like a monthly reporting or an annual reporting?
Actually, you know, what we do, the nurses, they do like a monthly assessment for the senior, and give the report, the assessment result to the PCP, their doctor, make sure there is any changes or there's no changes.
Are you talking about the facility itself, like, well, how are they certified? Does somebody come by and check on it, or is that what you...
Right, well, so I have a lack of familiarity, but basically, not so much, the nurses need to be nurses, of course, but the facility has oversight, so the assisted livings and the nurses...
I think the question is more the oversight from the state.
From the state. If I can just get started, and then I'll let, I'll let you finish, because he knows more about it than I do, but if we're able to get through the permitting process and the build-out, the state, first of all, there's licensing requirements, and we'll, and we'll file the applications for those licenses, and before we would be able to operate, they would actually come out and they would do a complete inspection of the property to ensure that it met their safety requirements. The thing that I don't know, which I think is responsive to what you're asking, is after that first inspection, do they come out periodically, monthly, annually?
That's right. You know, regularly, they come like and visit us every two years to do like, you know, full site inspection, all the paperwork, you know, every notes, everything, they do the tour on the site, make sure everything is okay as originally designed. And also, they do a random check, they may, you know, stop by and say hello, I want to walk through this, yeah, facility, they're welcome, no problem. Actually, last year, you know, we had the, you know, the inspection, you know, we got 100%, you know, successful, like, you know, passed the inspection, and also, you know...
Sorry, could I just, so the random ones are unannounced, correct?
Yeah, that's right, yes.
Okay, so, I think I get the general understanding. My concern, David, is that our elderly are kept safe, and that complaints are kept to the bare minimum. Okay.
Thank you. Online, we've got Jamie, do you have any questions?
No questions. From what I've heard so far, I really don't have a problem with this, and I agree, as someone who's watching her parents get a bit older, but really going through it with my in-laws, I can appreciate what this facility will offer.
Thank you.
No questions.
All right. Mike?
No, everything's been covered.
Okay. Yeah, my, I don't really have any questions either. I think you've outlined it pretty clearly. As you said, it's an existing building, it's really just about a second use. I think we're all basically in agreement, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't take away from the neighborhood, it's located industrially. You know, my own personal story is, my parents did end up going to adult daycare towards the end of their lives, and it was a tremendous benefit to my siblings, and I actually see it right across the street now. The bus, probably pretty similar to what Mr. Zhang has, shows up and takes the neighbor's parents on a, on a daily basis, so without question, it's a, it's a good service. Is there, do we have, I don't know if we have anybody from the Butters or from the public that wants to ask any questions or speak, either here or online? Anybody raising their hand online?
Um, no.
Okay. There's nobody in the audience?
Hang on, yes, I have...
You have one?
Maybe? Jack keeps, I'm going to bring him over. He keeps raising his hand and putting it down, so...
Okay.
Jack, did you have a question?
We can't hear you, Jack. Is he using your phone, Paul?
Can you hear me? Can, can anybody, hang on.
We got you now.
We can hear you now.
You can hear me now? Okay. I'm in agreement with this 100%. 25% of the population in the Town of Southborough is over the age of 65, so I think it's a good use. The only question I have is, he mentioned something about signage, and as you know, I have a directional sign for Nance at the corner of my property, which is west of this property, but I didn't hear exactly what he said about signage. So, that's, that's, I'm just, if he could just tell me where his sign is going to be, I have no issue with this at all.
Yeah, I think, I think I can speak to that, and we may have to pull up the plan, but if you know the property, there's an existing pylon out by Route 9 that has signs for other, for other offices in there, and we're just going to have an additional sign on that pylon, and it's my understanding, there's going to be no additional signage on the building or anywhere else. Am I correct about that?
That's right.
So, it's, so it's going to be on an existing structure?
It's just going to be on an existing, already constructed pylon with no alteration to the building for any other signs.
That's fine, that's, that's, that doesn't block me at all, so that's great. So, I'm 100% in favor.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
No, I do not have anybody.
Nobody here seems to be stepping forward, so I don't think we have any other questions. We could entertain closing the public meeting, taking a vote.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
All right, motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, and Williams, aye. Close of the public meeting, again, considering the temperature of the hearing, I don't think we have anything really more to discuss. There are, there's, there's two...
There are two special permits that you need to vote on.
Two special permits, just to be clear. I think we don't have to take separate votes, I think it's just the motion needs to be to approve.
And I think I'm an alternate tonight, because I think all of us are here, so I don't know if I'm...
Oh, you're, oh.
Yeah.
That's a good point, thank you.
Just for going, just for the vote part, yeah.
Yes, thank you for reminding me, I always need a reminder, but we do need the motion first.
So, I'll make a motion to approve as applied for, for both the special permits, is that, did I say that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Jamie, you have the second. Okay, motion to approve both special permits as submitted and written has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Thank you very much, that's approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll be in touch about timelines and filing and everything like, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it. Okay, so I just sort of an administrative note here, what, the way the agenda is written, item two is what we commonly refer to as Park Central, which is Zero Turnpike Road. However, we do have two board members who accuse themselves, and we, we have another item of business, the reorganization of the board that we have to take care of. That means we need to choose and vote on a new chair, a new clerk.
That's it.
So, need to take, so if you're here for Park Central, I just would ask for a little bit of patience, I don't think this will take too long, but we think the first order of business would be for the chair. I don't have strong feelings.
For, if these folks are here for Park Central, to let them know that there's really nothing on Park Central tonight to...
Oh, yeah, that's true, just to sort of give away, I agree, I hate to make people wait. The long and the short of it is that, you know, that the applicant's not here, we asked if they could appear on Zoom, they're unavailable. Essentially, what we're going to do is, is continue it for two weeks, and not to speak for the entire board, but I think we are going to be expecting some answers in two weeks. There'll definitely be more of a discussion if that's what you're here for. So, again, sorry to make you all out here.
Get out between the rain.
So, thank you. So, thank you for that, Paul.
You're welcome.
I think he said that they're being catered.
It sounded like, yeah.
Yeah, they're being, they're being brought in, so there's, and there was no, I didn't see any kitchen on the plans, so it sounded like they were being catered.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, again, back to reorganization of the board. I think we typically take on the chair person role first. So, I was just starting to say, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. You ready for somebody else?
I'd like to make a vote not to reorganize.
You have to. It's legally required.
Right.
You can keep it the same.
I'd like to make a vote to keep the organization the same. How's that?
I second it. Second.
All right, all right.
Well, that sounds unanimous.
So, can we move on? No, that, what, we need to, we do, we should be formal and take on, and nominate someone to be the chair to begin with.
So, I will nominate.
He's going to go against the spread.
I will nominate Dave Williams to stay as our chairman of our board of the zoning board here.
Second.
Oh, that was a second?
I don't know if we need to second, but I'm seconding it.
No, it does. Okay. All right, motion to, for me to continue as the chair has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Can I vote?
Yes, you can.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jamie?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The second position. Current, what's that?
Are you going to vote?
You can vote for yourself.
You can abstain if you want.
I'll abstain. How's that?
Yeah. You don't want to be on the record.
I don't want my, yeah, I don't want my head getting too big.
It's terrible enough as it is.
So, the other position is the clerk currently occupied by Mr. Robbins.
Does anybody else want it?
It's Mike.
I would, I think Mike's been doing a great job as clerk, and I would like to nominate Mike to stay as, to Mike Robbins to stay as clerk of the zoning board place.
Oh, God.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to nominate Mike Robbins as the clerk for the upcoming year with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Mike?
Abstain.
Abstain. Congratulations. We got that piece of business out of the way. Now, as far, that's it for?
Can we just knock the minutes out really quick, since we have a full board?
Yeah, yeah. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
We're not holding, I don't think we're holding any bit up now. So, we've got two separate meetings, June 12th and June 26th. Now, the, can you remind me which was which? I want to make sure that anybody who wasn't here doesn't feel, for one of the meetings.
I know when I wasn't here.
Okay, which one?
Yeah.
The 26th, I wasn't here.
Okay.
So, I cannot.
I also was not here on the 26th.
Okay. Yeah, the 12th, we had a full board.
Okay. They were, they were pretty lengthy, both of them. I think, were, they both related to? No, no, the, June 26th is about 2:50, right? June 12th was about 1:20, I believe.
Well, this was.
And so, 1:20 was when they said, you know, they came back and said, change where it's going. You're getting your 6.2 acres. You know, there was a lot of conversation about that. I didn't find any problems with the minutes, but I.
It's good with both. I read both of them. Fine with both meeting minutes.
Okay.
The 12th, the 12th, fine.
Anyone else with any comments? Mike, how did they look to you?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Okay.
For June 12th?
For June 12th?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'll second. Oh, well, you were, you said you were at the June 12th, Doris, right?
I was at the June 12th. I was not, by the way, June 26th is my birthday.
Oh, okay, all right, that's why.
It was not here.
No.
Okay, motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 12th as written has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Jamie?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Okay, very good. That takes care of the June 12th minutes. June 26th, I think I have that right, was the 250 Turnpike hearing. We didn't really go too far with that. That was where we discussed where the initial plan was. Sort of the bigger, sort of classic building and the option B, or whatever they call it, more accepted by the Butters, basically, is a bunch of townhouses. So, that was, that was the basic nature of that discussion. Again, there was a lot there. I didn't find anything that I would change in those minutes.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Mike and Jamie?
I'm fine with it.
I was not at that. I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, great. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 26th.
As written, okay.
I'll second.
With a second, okay. Motion to accept the meeting minutes from June 26th as written has been made with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Doris, not here, so abstaining. Williams, aye. Jamie, you were not here, did you say?
So, not there.
Correct.
Mike?
I was here, so I can vote. Aye.
Okay. There you go. With two abstaining, right?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so, back to Zero Turnpike Road.
Jamie and Paul can be free.
Park Central, yeah, yeah. Unless you want to.
Bye, guys.
Yeah.
Bye, guys.
I'm on vacation. I'm on vacation.
Don't, don't drag it out, Jamie.
Do we have anything to say about the upcoming meetings, or is that?
We do have one on July 31st.
July 31st, which will be 1:20 Turnpike. Yeah. 1:20 Turnpike and Park Central. And then, our next meeting after that is August 21st for 2, excuse me, 250 Turnpike. And that's it for now.
That sounds great.
Sounds good.
All right, so now, yeah, Jamie, Paul, you are free. You don't have, since you're recused.
Enjoy vacation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I might need Laura to correct me what I'm going to say here, but essentially, for Park Central, our, you know, this was, obviously, this is a continued hearing. The, I think the long and the short of it is, the litigation is still a ways from being resolved. They requested an extension and they said, well, you know, we're not really going to be able to be here. So, I mean, I had a little conversation with, or email, I had a conversation with Laura and I did involve Jay Tellman a bit to say, well, you know, what are our options? But given the fact that nobody could be here this evening, I think really, this is a formality. I think what we really want to do here is say, yes, we want to extend it, or continue it by two weeks. And again, plan to have, I would, what I would expect to be a little bit more substantive discussion at that meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, just as a, if I can interject, I'm going to be overseas with a seven-hour time difference, so it's going to be a real challenge for me.
Okay.
It's frustrating to me because, you know, you know, I've been, the record's pretty clear on me. I don't think we should have heard this in the first place. I'm really tired of kicking the can on this in the second place. And I don't think, just, and again, I'm not some oracle, but the idea that they were going to have substantive answers from the court within that timetable, I thought was, you know, overly optimistic on a pretty large scale. So, you know, it's one of those things, I would like to say I can attend that meeting. I just don't know if that's practical, given the, look, the time difference.
Right, yeah. No, I think, I understand pretty clearly your feelings about it. And I think it will be, I think it will be interesting to get Jay's, I do have some of Jay's inputs. Mike, you probably already have your own opinions. But I'm not, you're not wrong. It is a little bit ridiculous. But again, I don't, I want to be careful about not going too far down the road in the discussion here.
I agree. I know what you're saying, but I just, for the record, so everyone knows where I stand on that, Mike, I just.
Yeah, no, yeah, you know, and I think, I want to say, I think Doug's pretty close second there, so there's not really a lot of secrets.
I haven't alerted one time.
So, yeah, I guess that's really, what I'm asking for is, you know, to take a vote on continuing the hearing until July 31st.
I have a thought.
But, go ahead.
Small thought. I think, let me see if I hear this right. I think missing a hearing, not writing on a hearing, is not great. I don't know if it, yeah, that, I'm just saying how it is. If I miss, I miss a deadline, I'm a little bit tight on it.
Well, and, I mean, you're not wrong, because.
I know I'm not wrong.
We gave them the opportunity to say, you can dial in remotely, you know, and it's perfectly acceptable, and they didn't do that. So, that, you make a fair point, yeah.
No, no, it's not only am I correct, I'm just thinking about it. That's, you know, I'm thinking about it because you should show up or write or something.
Yeah, I would hope we have a bit more of a substantive update, which, although I agree with Mike, I'm not sure we're going to have much of a substantive update in two weeks, but.
Nope.
And, you know, but, yeah, it feels like we're just, you know, kicking the can down the road, but.
We're cutting a break.
And I think that's the discussion that we need to have on the 31st. That's my feeling on it. Okay. Anything else, or?
Do I have, do I have to continue it?
We, I mean, we can, you know, we've got options to say we don't want to. You could, you could say, we're, you know, based on the way it's going, we could take a vote to disapprove it. But that would be, I think the likely outcome there is they go to the mass housing and appeal and it's not going to be good for us. So, as much as I don't really love this either, I, just, without them here, I think this is, this is the only really option.
I think the best for tonight is to continue it to two weeks, right? Just because otherwise, just, you know, that time's against us. This helps us just to have more time in the bank. But, I mean, again, it should, hopefully Jay can be here for that next meeting too as well. Because, again, the, the suggestion he had before is that we could deny, based upon the fact that there's litigation going on, and he felt pretty comfortable that mass housing would not suddenly approve the project, right? They would go back and clarify that you, I don't want to call it site control, but there's obviously an impediment here that suggests that you can't do it. I would hope they would resolve the litigation, you know, so we don't have to do that. Because I'm not saying there's no risk in that, but it would seem like there's very little risk in that, right?
Yeah.
But I think that's the discussion we should have in two weeks, you know, as part of it. You know, but at least also to let, you know, the owners know, like, I mean, it could be another six, nine, who knows how long it's going to be?
Right.
And so.
Yeah, and that's back to me, just to interject on Doris's point. You're supposed to be here tonight. Oh, now I'm supposed to be on vacation? And like, we're just supposed to jump to another two-week extension because they couldn't bother to be here tonight? So, it's like.
Mike, I empathize with your seven hours. I've done quite a few.
Yeah, I know.
That's 3 o'clock in the morning and I've done quite a few.
Yeah, that's exactly, and you're a better person than I am. I'll tell you that much.
So, I.
It's tough.
But I actually will add, I didn't originally, I didn't include a detail, which was, they actually asked to push it out by three months. And I said, I've recommended to Laura, I said, no, 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 they need to be back here before then. We're not, we're not kicking it out three months.
Yep.
I'm glad.
Especially without them being here.
No, I think it'd be great to get a real update and then we can discuss with Jay. Not that we necessarily need to take a specific action even on the 31st, but I do think, I think they need to hear from us that this is, we're like wasting time a little bit here.
Correct, right.
Hey, we're wasting all the other residents' time as well, who are showing up all the time for your, your meeting.
Yeah, I can, I can pretty much guarantee you there will be a Butters at that meeting that will say, why are you continuing to continue?
Yeah, I thought we were to hear that tonight.
That will happen. I'm certain of it.
I have a little different angle to make sure I get this extension wrapped around my head. So, what is the maximum date since they applied with all this delay in between kicking the can? Didn't I read December 11th? But if we go out three months, does that add three months? Just someone give me that rundown.
Yeah, I mean, I think for us to say we want to extend it out, the ask is, we want to push out the date.
Yeah, I think, and they have done that every time. It would have to be day for day, because otherwise it would not, I would not be amenable to.
Right. Then the answer would simply be no.
The backend date, it's always going to push out for us. Otherwise, it's not going to happen.
You can't, can't get it done?
Yeah.
Okay, so, but that keeps the space holder and all those.
Correct, yeah.
Is that fair? I'm a fair person. That's where I'm coming from.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, they could be, you know, difficult about it, but if they're the ones requesting the extension, then you would expect them to say, yes, we're going to push the date out.
I always say, if they said they weren't going to push the date out, well, then I think we're with Jay's option pretty quickly, which is.
Correct, right.
To deny back to mass housing with the charge that they made, whatever Jay comes up with, but they don't have legitimate site control, whatever it is, because of the lawsuit.
Right.
But I would assume they're going to extend the date, but that's an absolute requirement.
Yeah.
If they, if they were to suggest not to extend it day for day, then we have.
I'm just giving my hand, handle on, you know, the best management of the day.
Yeah.
And what's best for the town.
Yeah.
And do they own the site?
Yeah. So, it would be great for, obviously, I mean, you've already talked with Jay, which is great. So, it'd be great that when Jay does come, that, you know, he's prepared to help counsel us at that meeting.
And I will request that he be here for that meeting, so.
Okay.
Yep.
I do have a tiny detail, if you guys want it. In that, when their attorney called me to figure out the written request for extension that they submitted for this meeting, he did note that the deadline for discovery for court has been pushed out to October 18th. So, just to give you guys an idea of timeline that they're working with. Sorry.
No, it's fine. So, I guess we'd ask, you know, I'm thinking about Mike here too as well, so.
Well, this may interest you. We sent all the public home.
True.
Okay, so, just in fairness to the public, go ahead.
Yeah. But, yeah, so I think, well, so I think at this point, we should meet in two weeks. That's what they asked for, right? If they ask for a three-month extension, for some reason, I mean, at some point, well, I think too, Mike has to be on, right? Otherwise, we don't have a quorum.
That's what I'm concerned.
Yeah, I'd have to run it by Jay. It would be better if we have four.
Yep.
I think technically.
We could still do it.
You can do it with three.
Yeah, three out of four.
You could do a continuance.
Yeah.
With three, but if you guys were to decide to take some sort of other action, I think it would be best if four were here.
Right, yep.
Right.
I think, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to, for some reason, Mike cannot find that awesome Wi-Fi connection.
I want to know.
Seriously.
Yeah, a cup of coffee. I would be very much in favor of almost. First of all, if they ask for something long, I would almost be like, we're going to just punt to the next regular meeting that, you know, Mike can be at, you know, type of thing.
Sure.
You know, because I'm just saying, like, if for some reason Mike cannot be on the call, I would almost be like, yeah, let's take the update. But, you know, we're not, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a longer extension without all of us here.
Right, that's fine.
Yeah, so, or even taking a more drastic action, and for some reason, Mike, you could not find the Wi-Fi connection.
It's literally, it's just more time and I've got a two-year-old and a 10-year-old. You know, I'm literally, I get so little vacation time, it's just like, you know.
Fair enough.
Mike, to share with you, that is the worst time at night, by the way, to take those calls. It's, you got a two-year-old.
And that's where, it's just add frustration. It's just, oh, so now I have to get up at the crack of dawn because they couldn't get their act together?
It's not the crack of dawn, it's all of dawn.
Yeah, it's the middle of the night, whatever, but like.
It's the middle of the night.
You know, I still have to get up at, you know, 5:30 in the morning with the little guy.
Right. Okay.
We understand you're a volunteer.
No, again, like, if it was, it's of course, if I could punt on anything else, I'd punt, but, you know, this is a big deal and it's just like, okay, well, you know, of course, this has to.
Can we look at recruiting an alternate? It's too late. We're past, we're past that.
Yeah.
They missed too many meetings. That idea is dead, sorry. Strike it.
I mean, we still need another alternate.
Yeah, I remember back when we were recruiting Doug, that we probably are still, and you had put something up on the town website. I remember that, Laura.
Yeah.
Somebody who.